Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us here at Hall Campus, at the Memorial Ballroom, and those on Facebook Live at home as well. We really appreciate you taking time out of your evening to hear a little bit more about the College Lake Dam project, especially the steps moving forward as we are getting ready to start construction in the new year. So what we want to do tonight is kind of go over some information and share with you. And also, we'll have some question and answer at the end, but we'll go ahead and get started. So a little housekeeping, as we have some folks in person, so if you're here and you have questions, we will have a microphone that will go around towards the end and make sure everybody's questions are answered. If you do have a cellphone, anybody in the audience, I would ask you to put that on silence since we are recording this for our records and to be able to share online. For any of our folks joining us on Facebook Live, if you have a question, please use your comments. We will be monitoring that. Enter those in, and we will do our best to get to all of the questions as we go. If we can't get to everybody before our time is up for the evening, we'll make sure that we follow up with you on Facebook and get you the answers to those questions that you have, but we will do our best to get to everything. And then, as I mentioned before, it will be recorded, so that will be available on the collegelakedamremoval.org webpage in a couple of days after the meeting is done. With that, I'd like to -- oh, actually, sorry. So this is a little bit more information, so if tonight, after the meeting's done, if you have any follow-up questions, please feel free to submit a question. We have an email for the project, collegelakedamremoval@lynchburgva.gov. You can also go to that webpage, which this is the QR code that will link you straight to it, or you can feel free to mail it in to me directly at our office. So should you have any other questions afterwards, feel free to give us a call. With that, I'd like to bring up or invite up Dr. Allison Morrison Shetler with the university. She's the university president, just to give us a word of welcome. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everybody, everybody in the room and online. My name's Allison Morrison Shetler. I'm the president of the University of Lynchburg, and I just want to welcome you all to this particular event to inform ourselves about what's happening. I do also want to recognize that we've had a lot of involvement as the university in this project, as it's been developing, because it's right in our backyard. And I particularly want to give a thanks and a shout-out to Professor Laura Henry-Stowe, who is with us this evening. She has been instrumental in making sure that we've had good communication between the city and the university, and looking towards the future of how this can be an educational opportunity for our students, our faculty, and our staff here on this campus. But also want to just thank the whole group that are here today to talk about this project. We did meet a couple of nights ago at the city manager's house. All the people who live on Faculty Drive were there, and we had the opportunity to really ask some great questions, find out how it was going to impact the residents around the dam, and of course, the impact on the university. So really want to welcome you all, want to welcome everybody from the city who's here and who's working on this project, and thank you for the collaboration and cooperation that is happening and will happen in the future. So, welcome and thank you.
And I am Erin Hawkins. I am a water quality manager with the City of Lynchburg Department of Water Resources. I've also been serving as a project manager for this project, starting off after the unfortunate dam flood issue that we had back in 2018, and moving this project forward till we got to today. So we have been working very diligently on all of our engineering studies, the research that has had to been done to develop the construction plans for this, and we're going to go over some of the approach tonight and some of the overview that we have. But I also want to take some time to identify some of the staff that's here with us tonight and that has been working on the project and will be working with us in the future. I'd like to introduce Whitney Roberts and Jason Snyder. They are our communications specialists in our department, and they are helping with a lot of the outreach, so the Facebook Live folks, making sure that we get questions answered and getting information out to the community. So if you have any questions and you call our department, you can reach out to them as well as we move forward in the project. I'd like to introduce Tanya Petry. She is going to be our construction coordinator on-site, so she's going to be working very closely with our contractors in making sure that the day-to-day activities are moving smoothly as they aren't anticipated to be, at least that's what we hope for anyway. I'd like to introduce next our AE Comm staff. We have Ron Smith and Brandon Alderman here with us. They have been the team leads for the design and getting everything ready to get to this point today. So if we get into any technical questions, I will refer to them to come up and join the conversation there. Next, I would like to introduce our contractors. The representatives that we have here tonight is WC English Construction. They are going to be here. They're going to be the contractor on the project, Judd Dalton and Paul Johnson with English is here with us tonight. And also with Resources Environmental Services, also known as RES, which as I commonly refer to them as, we have -- hold on, I wrote this down and I didn't have it ready for me -- Jeremy Kletterbuck and Wesley Tweedy with us here tonight, as they're going to be working on the project as we move forward. So thank y'all, everybody, for being here tonight, and if we do have some specific questions, they'll be here to answer those as well. So thank y'all so very much. So our agenda that we plan to go over this evening, we're going to do a little bit of a project overview. We're going to highlight some of the construction activities that are going to be taking place over the coming months, in the next about 18 to 24 months, and then we're going to touch on some of the long-term strategies that we have identified with the university for moving forward. First and foremost, before the College Lake Dam project could really move forward, we had to remove Lakeside Drive from atop the dam. So what you see here in this picture in the foreground, this is the old Lakeside Drive that a lot of people would drive over every day and maybe not even realize that it was a dam. But this is the dam that is actually going to be removed as part of the project, but first and foremost, we had to build a bridge. And with that, there was a long-planned roundabout project, so we had to tie those two together and get that constructed before we could really come in with the work that we're needing to do here now. So we're going to go over some of those items now. So for those that may not realize, College Lake Dam is a high-hazard dam. What that means is that the potential for failure is high, and in that failure, that could cause life, loss of life, or significant and/or significant impact to infrastructure and utilities downstream. We have a number of bridges, railroads, utility lines that downstream, which along with residential structures that are close to or in the floodplain. So it is something that is of utmost concern to us as a high-hazard dam. We have ongoing emergency action planning when we have a flash flood watch or warning. These are things that we are out there constantly monitoring the dam per the dam safety requirements within the Department of Conservation and Recreation to make sure that the dam stays secured. And that's what we saw happen in 2018. We had a flash flood watch happen. We were monitoring that dam. We saw that it was overtopping, and we had to initiate emergency evacuation of all the residential and commercial structures downstream of there. We were fortunate that we did not have a complete and total breach of the dam that evening, but it did overtop, and it did sustain significant damages to it. So this is something that we've had to -- we have been working on for a long time, and we knew that we had to come up with a viable, long-term solution to remove the high-hazard structure. The other aspect of this is that what you see here on the graphic, that kind of bright blue color, Blackwater Creek is a much, much smaller channel within that area, but that is the floodplain boundary, and that is on a sunny day breach if that dam were to have broken, the potential impact area. And during a storm event or a flood event, that elevation increases. So it is something of concern that, you know, being able to remove these inundation areas downstream is going to be very important to our community, and we have been working closely with FEMA as they have started an initiative to update the 100-year floodplain mapping across the state, and they're in the process of working within our region right now, so we have been working very closely with them to be able to coordinate our efforts to understand what the removal of the dam means on the floodplain area there. So some of the big goals, once we've identified the dam removal needed to occur, the big goals that we had in here is to manage the historical legacy sediment that is being held back by the dam to restore a stream channel through that former lakebed area so that Blackwater Creek is reconnected from upstream to downstream, so that we, you know, we bring back the Riverine Valley that was once there before it was actually constructed back in 1934. And then, one of the things that we want to provide opportunity for is floodplain reconnection through wetlands and grading to be able to have the opportunity for wetlands to thrive and to reestablish themselves over time, and we'll go over some of that information as we move forward. So again, just a couple of pictures, you know, looking from the university side, looking west, you can see the existing spillway, the arched bridge, and then the old portion of Lakeside Drive. Again, that is the dam portion that is going to be removed, and then this is just looking upstream. And what we will wind up having is being able to go through and see the reconnection of that stream channel. So moving downstream, which is here at the top of the slide, this is the downstream portion of it, towards where Lakeside Drive is. Moving upstream, we will have a grade control structure tying that lower grade into the existing lake area, having that meander kind of curve through the lakebed area to the upstream area. And the project limits, as it is, is going to be not quite as far up as we had studied within the former lake area. This is what was considered the entire lake extent, once it was created back in the 1930s. But our project, I'll point on the screen in a minute, but I want to make sure the microphone picks up. What I'll show you here is where the upper limits of the project will be. And that will be about right in this area here. So this will be the upper reach of the project. Again, these are just some more images that AE Comm was able to provide to give context of what we mean by meandering, having that curvy stream moving up through that, that curve. A stream naturally wants to curve. It naturally wants to move, so we want to be able to create that for it, for Blackwater to reconnect up and downstream. And then where we have some of these tributaries tied in, here Fox Creek that we have called out on the screen, we will have those creek and tributaries tied into the main stem of Blackwater as we move forward in the project. The other idea that we'll have is that, you know, while there will be a lot of rock used in this, it is not going to be a riprap channel. It is not going to be a drainage channel going through the middle of the lake area. We're using, while we are using a lot of rock and boulder, large stone, we are using an extraordinary amount of vegetative control measures, reusing trees, any of the trees that we do have to cut down on-site, we're going to reincorporate them back into the project, whether they're through root wads, using the trees themselves to help stabilize the stream bank where they're going to be underwater, and like I said, an extraordinary amount of vegetation with the seed mixture and trees and plant material that we will be incorporated into this project. And what we'll see, and as we move through, we'll see some pictures of what to expect as we move through construction. So it's going to look worse before it looks better, but the idea is, is as we are implementing the vegetation and the plantings, and as we go through multiple growing seasons, it will begin to green up and will begin to look a lot less like a construction site and much more like a stream valley as we move forward post-construction. Again, our contractors that we're going to have on the project, English and RES, highly respected, and they really know what they're doing in terms of management of the sediment that's going to be going on, and then the restoration efforts. RES is very well-versed in stream restoration, and they're going to be providing the restoration efforts as part of the work that they're going to be doing alongside English. As we move forward into that construction, we're currently kind of getting all the contracts taken care of, I's dotted, T's crossed, that normally have to go on with these types of projects. So we are well into that process to get everything up and running, but this is a tentative schedule that we have laid out. What we anticipate is that in January, they're going to be mobilizing and moving on to the project site to kind of get the area ready for the work to begin. Early spring, we're going to have the siphon installation or the dewatering installation installed at the dam so that we can lower the lake level, so that's going to be very important. And throughout all of this, some of the, we'll go over some of the methods that we'll be using to manage the site through that process. By May, we anticipate the dam being completely decommissioned. What that means is there'll be no longer an impounding structure across that stream valley, or what will be a stream valley, and it will be an open-flow water through that area again. And at that time, since we will no longer have the dam in place, we no longer have a high-hazard dam, we no longer have that threat of overtopping or significant failure. So that's an important aspect to go, that will go away once we have the dam actually decommissioned. What I will take a moment to say is that I don't want there to be a misconception that this area won't flood anymore. Blackwater Creek has been and always will be a floodplain area. It is a designated 100-year floodplain, so we do have mapping and information on that, and more will come out in the coming year, about a year, year and a half, with FEMA to get that information out to the public. But that area will always flood, it'll always be susceptible to flooding, but we won't have the dam inundation that we currently have, or the threat of dam inundation that we have. Once we get into May, once we get that decommissioning, RES will have staged and are ready for the restoration. They're probably already going to be working on the upper reaches of the lake area, but moving into that June of 2024 to November of 2025 will really be into the restoration mode. Heavy sediment management, restoration efforts moving forward to have these tributaries tied in, creating that stream channel, moving up the lakebed area, and reconnecting it up and downstream. We anticipate a December 2025 closure of the project, but that's just for the construction piece of it. Once we'll, and then we'll have some compliance monitoring that we'll talk about a little bit more as we move forward, and then, so that's going to be a five-year compliance monitoring period, and then the university will take on the long-term stewardship of the property upstream of the new Lakeside Drive bridge, to put that into reference for you. So this is our construction schedule moving forward. An anticipated daily schedule is going to be Monday to Friday typical work hours. We are not anticipating long-term 24-hour operations, however, we will have some select time periods for critical removal or critical times, whether it is the removal of the dam or the installation, the dewatering structures, that we will have a 24/7 operation because that means an impact to the dam. And while it is still a dam, and while it is still standing, we still have to meet all of dam safety requirements. So that's why we want that done as quickly as possible. So once it starts, it will not stop. That information will be provided out to the public ahead of time so that you're aware of the ongoing impact, so that mostly it will be to the folks that are in the immediate vicinity of the dam, mostly the university and the folks that live on Faculty Drive will have that noise associated with those 24/7 operations. But again, we'll have that information out well ahead of time of that work. Saturdays and Sundays are pretty much off-limits unless we are getting into those critical time periods, and we need to, that is part of that 24/7 operation, but otherwise, we are not anticipating much weekend work as part of this project, and then holidays will typically be closed. We'll also be working with the university, so if there are any special events or occasions that are going on on campus to make sure from a traffic safety perspective that they're aware of where we are in the stage of the project so that we can be as accommodating as we can for access to the university. I imagine move-in days and graduation dates are going to be some of those key timeframes that we'll be working with them on. For the general safety of the public, the Creekside Drive Trail will be closed from Lakeside Drive all the way up to Shirley Road. We really want to discourage access to the site. Once the lake is drained, it is going, it's going to be very dangerous to try to get out on it, so we do not encourage anyone to do it. I myself, when we were in the early stages of studying this, and you know, when the lake was drawn down in 2018, it was not fun. I had to get pulled out of it. It's not fun, so we don't want anybody to have to go through that. We have worked with our emergency services folks to make sure that we have access to the site, especially for our contractors as they're working, but other than that, you know, the site will be closed to, or the trail will be closed to visitors coming through. And we have worked with our Parks and Recreation Department, and we'll continue to work with that to get that information out ahead of the project starting. Construction traffic, we have a plan to attack at all angles, at least in terms of access to the site, whether this is for day-to-day typical employee truck vehicles or deliveries to the site, or some equipment as it has to move through. Vehicular access will be in the orange, accessing through Lakeside Drive and down Faculty Drive all the way to the cul-de-sac there to reach some of the upper reaches of the project area. We will have some construction traffic coming through the main campus, up the main access road into campus, and through West Dover Drive. However, in conversation with our contractors, they are very keen on limiting heavy truck traffic and hauling through that for any long-term period of time. So while we will have access through all of these different routes, as you see on the screen, the heavy lifting, the heavy hauling that we'll wind up doing for this project is going to be here up at Lakeside Drive, this kind of little blue squiggle up there. It's one of the haul roads that we'll have. So in working with English, we are anticipating and we are going to do our very best to limit most of the heavy truck hauling through this area. This was not necessarily an opportunity that was available to us early on, thinking that we, you know, being able to have to get up into these upper reaches. The scope of this project, as we stop the project right around in this area here, towards the end of Faculty Drive, really limits our need to have significant access to that upper section of the lake, and they feel strongly that they're going to be able to work mostly in this area, but with some of the periphery employee and delivery traffic, they'll have to come through campus. So we'll be mindful to make sure that there will be an increase in truck traffic on Lakeside Drive as we move forward, and being able to be mindful of that. We will be implementing a maintenance of traffic plan, and so please be mindful of signage as we move into construction, whether it's a speed limit entrances coming in and out, and truck traffic coming in and out of there. We're also going to be working very closely with the university to maintain access through this trail. As we know and understand, there is a trail that a lot of the athletics folks uses to get to some of these practice fields up off of Faculty Drive, so we are working very closely with them and have a tentative plan that we need to talk to the university about for maintaining that pedestrian traffic as you move off of the new sidewalk here, and to get those students over, back over to the trail to come on up to Faculty Drive. So those are some of the considerations that we are being able to adapt to with this, with our contractor. Dewatering. Dewatering is going to be used to lower the lake level in a very slow manner, in a deliberate manner, so that we can minimize the sediment transport downstream. What we, it still may look murky, and it may still look a little muddy, but what we're trying to manage to the best extent possible is the heavy coarse material, so it's not moving downstream. So having these, it will be a kind of a multi-pipe approach right there, and you'll see it right as you're coming down Lakeside Drive, you'll be able to see it there, but that's going to be the dewatering system to be able to control the lake levels. We'll be able to pass some of the larger storm events, up to about a 10-year storm, so that we don't run necessarily the risk of the lake filling back up again and having to start the dewatering process all over again. But in the event that we have a significant rain event, something similar to the 2018 event that we saw, we would anticipate the lake would fill back up pretty much to the levels that we see today, and the primary spillway underneath the existing bridge would be activated again. But once we start this dewatering process, that will be the primary outlet for the lake area itself. Dam removal will be that 24/7 operation where English will move in very quickly. We will be closely monitoring the weather, making sure that we have an optimal dry weather period so that we can get in there and take care of getting the material out of there as quickly as possible. We don't want to have a flash flood or storm event pop up on us and cause an impact there. That will be a critical period that we'll have in moving forward. And these are just some of the typical pictures that AE Comm and/or English has been able to provide to us for some of the work that has occurred, and what this may look like. This is a little bit of a smaller scale, but it's not, it's going to be very similar to what to be expected. Restoration and sediment management, and that probably should be flip-flop sediment management, and then we're coming in with the restoration. There is a significant loading, about 130,000 cubic yards of material that we anticipate moving out of this lakebed area to be able to put the stream channel through there. And with this, this is where it's going to look a lot less pretty before it does look nice again. It is going to be an open lakebed area, as we saw in 2018, if anybody remembers that, where we saw a stream channel cut into that sediment. As it draws down, English and RES will have their folks staged and ready to be actively managing that sediment, so we will have different sediment trapping measures in place, coffer dams and et cetera, you know, really in place to help us capture, remove, and move that sediment before it really has a chance to move downstream. We really want to minimize the opportunity for that, and we will have, and we'll talk about this later, I have a slide on it, but I'll go ahead and talk about it now, but that we do have monitoring in place that we can monitor the turbidity limits in Blackwater Creek, so that, you know, if we're seeing an uptick too quick, too fast, too high, we can adjust our construction activities to be able to try to moderate that, to keep it within a normal range. This is what I was talking about before, is the, this was an aerial image that we had for when, in 2018, when the lake had to be drawn down. It had to be drawn down then to do a thorough inspection of the dam, and it was a safety measure required by DCR, the Department of Conservation and Recreation Dam Safety Division. It was something that we had to put in place in order to, as I say, fully assess the dam, make sure that the repairs are done, make sure there weren't any other issues unforeseen over the course of that time period, and just kind of make sure that the lake would have been safe to fill up again. And it wasn't until DCR made that determination that we were able to fill College Lake back up, and we were able to essentially close the spigot on the low-level outlet that's out there to be able to do it. College Lake is, it's unique in a sense that it's a bathtub effect. If you open that low-level outlet, it all drains. There's no stage, there's no controlling the outflow from that low-level outlet, so it was all or nothing. You couldn't open it one day and close it the next and expect that you would actually get the sluice gate closed again because of the debris that gets caught up in there. So getting it opened was a challenge, getting it closed was a challenge. We had divers up in there physically having to, you know, dawn the full regalia of their diving gear, and for more of what they would normally do for ocean-type of diving, to go up in this three-by-three culvert and clear out that material. So it was very unsustainable to, one, leave it open, and then also with the sediment migration moving downstream, we did not want to see those long-term impacts downstream. So it was very, it was very challenging to find the right course of events, making sure that all of the repairs that needed to be done, and making sure all the dam safety requirements were the way that they should have been before we filled it back up. But what we will see, some of the typical structures, if you can see here on the screen, hopefully this shows up for you, but these are some of the log structures that can be used within the tributaries and some of the channel alignment to help with the stability. And over time, usually if they're underwater, they'll pretty much stay. A lot of, you know, preservation of wood happens that way when you have it submerged for a long period of time, so as it's underwater, it will stay in place for a very long So as it's underwater, it will stay in place for a very long period of time. And as it does decay, and if it does, that sediment load coming through the system and natural vegetation that will kind of come back in will help stabilize all of those areas. But to get in here and start this work, we will have to come in. Our permitting does allow for us to work in the wet, so it will not be a completely dry scenario. We won't have necessarily everything diverted. But we will be working, or I'm sure Res, I don't want to put words in their mouth either, but as they're working, they're looking for opportunities to try to work in that dry, to minimize the work in the wet. But we do have that flexibility to be able to, to get this stream channel constructed up through the lake bed area. And then over time, you'll be, you'll begin to see that vegetation as it takes root and starts growing. The first growing season will look a little bit greener, the second, and by the third growing season, it's going to look like a completely different stream valley, something that you would see more akin to upstream of the lake, where you're going to have a, a stream channel, the floodplain reconnection, and then we'll begin to see the low, low story plants coming out and eventually the, the larger trees will, will take root and kind of create that canopy. So this restoration, once we're started with construction, it will really be decades in the making as we, you know, we watch for the, the canopy to restore itself through this area. One thing I do want to touch base on here is that in the localized area as the, the lake is drained, it's going to smell not so good. During certain periods of time, it'll have that kind of rotten egg smell to it. I've been told particularly the summer months, it may not be as pleasant. But as that sediment dries out and as it's moved, tho- those smells will dissipate within the project area. There will be your typical construction noise and talking with the contractor, it's going to be very similar to what we saw with the bridge and the roundabout construction, your typical traffic, your typical backup noises for the construction that will be in the area. And it will really only be those 24 separate, 24/7 operations that will have that noise over, over a nighttime period. And as I mentioned before, you know, the water's going to look murky, but we do have monitoring in place and we will be keeping a close eye on turbidity limits to make sure that we're not seeing too much of the heavy course material moving downstream. This is something that we initiated, the monitoring, very early on in the design process. So we have about a year, year and a half worth of monitoring data to be able to see what the daily is. So we have daily information on the turbidity as storm events come and, and we'll be able to monitor that throughout construction. Very early on in the project, and well before we got into the design phase of this project, we knew we had to come up with a solution to the sediment, what to do with it. What we had planned for in the project is for sediment to be kept on-site through using, hesitate to use the word stockpile, and I know that's on the screen here. But what it was designed to be is more of kind of a final resting place for the sediment to remain on-site, tied into the existing landscape and tie that into the grading. What we didn't necessarily have available to us at the time was an off-site, a suitable off-site location to be able to move some of that sediment to. In working with English, what they are planning to do is that they do have a suitable site or they're, they, they'll have a suitable site in place so that actually the majority of the sediment that would have stayed on-site will actually be moved off-site. That's one of the reasons why we will see more truck traffic coming up Lakeside. I think this is a win-win in the long run, not having so much sediment there. We won't have to worry as much with stability of those areas. We had a very complex system in place to make sure that those stockpiles would stay where they're supposed to be. But being able to remove that, we will still have some sediment staying on-site, but a lot of that will be reincorporated back into the project as we're moving a channel from one location to the other. We'll be, you know, needing some of the material that is within the, the site area to be able to, to fill those areas in. But the majority of the rest of it will be moved off-site. At least that's the game plan that we're moving forward with, with the contractors. And again, that information will, will be working through the, the fine-tuned details of that as, as we're moving forward. I've talked about monitoring during the construction period, so I won't stay here too long other than saying that, you know, we will have full-time construction administration by AECom and MBP, who is a subcontractor to AECom, to have full-time engineering and construction administration on-site through this project. Along with our construction coordination, we'll, we'll be able to work with them very closely to make sure that the project is staying on track, that we're hitting the goals that we've established very early on in the project. And, you know, the, the best case scenario is, is we'll be able to keep on our timeline. But the very best scenario is, is that Mother Nature cooperates us, with us through this process and we don't have any significant storm events or flood events that would really impact the construction phase of this project. So that is something that we're, we're looking towards the future of hoping that, you know, we'll have some good working conditions. So long-term management, what we are looking at is for the permitting through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for this type of work, we do have a five-year compliance, compliance monitoring period where the city will be working very closely with AECom to monitor the construction area, monitoring the grade control at the downstream, monitoring the stream itself, monitoring the wetland areas or the over bank areas on either side of the restored portion of Blackwater Creek, to make sure that we're not seeing substantial issues there with shifting or migrating of the channel or anything that would require us to come back and correct. The best-case scenario, long-term thinking down the road, is that one day this area will no longer look like that it was a lake area itself. It will look like a stream valley like it once was almost 100 years ago, with it being reconnected through there. So our best hope and our long-term strategy is, is to get this to a point where it may never look like it had a lake there to begin with. I want to take it, you know, as an opportunity to recognize, it's very bittersweet, I, I realize with the removal of College Lake Dam and it's been here for, you know, about 90 years. There's a lot of fond memories here. I'm an alum of, of the university. We're back when it was Lynchburg College, so I, I understand the significance of it to the campus, to the community. I understand a lot of people still don't realize, you know, why we have to move it, remove it, but you know, it, it really is a public safety issue that we, we're having to address here and we're trying to do it in the best way that we know how from an ecological perspective to protect Blackwater Creek, protect the floodplain and try to create a stable area for this project. Again, that long-term and more of like perpetuity is that the university will take control over the area and will be responsible for the project area after we're done with construction, done with the compliance monitoring period. That's where the university steps in and takes on that long-term stewardship of the project area. These are some of the items that typically occur during those long-term invasive species. There's a lot of them out there already. It's not that we have to eradicate invasives, but it is trying to, to control it i- if we can out there, really making sure that we have an opportunity, really just to be the stewards of the land. So that's making, whether we do environmental activities, stream cleanups, planting sometimes to help supplement proj- some, supplement some of the plantings that will be out there. So those will be some of the strategies moving forward that can be undertaking. Some of the, the fun things that we were able to incorporate into this project, this is actually Brandon Alderman with AECom and our own Dr. Laura Henry Stone here at the university and some of her class, we, they actually participated with some of the design aspects of it, helping us collect field data. This is an excellent opportunity for these students to learn real life, real world and have these experiences if they're moving into the environmental sciences or biology type of professions. This is, you know, in, in many ways, this is exactly what they'll encounter and experience. So there's a lot of research opportunity here to, to explore, whether it's undergraduate, graduate partnerships to come in. We even, you know, in the very early stages, created a, a master plan and we did really a recreational master plan. And the reason why we did that is to be able to incorporate that into our permitting strategy. So if we wanted to do boardwalks, elevated boardwalks within the floodplain or across the creek, that, that would have kind of been accounted for in the project. And we would be able to move forward those in the, in the future without having to do quite the legwork that we would have had to have done if they were completely separate projects done at a completely different times. So we've identified areas for recreation opportunities on campus, further trail extensions. You know, all of this will have to come at a later date and by other means of whether it's from the university, partnerships with the city or other grant initiatives. But, you know, we really did want to try to set a vision for what this area could become. We didn't just want it to be a dam removal and be done with it and then it looked like a dam removal project. We wanted to really kind of begin to blend back into the, the watershed up and downstream and, and have it something that we would be proud of. With that, that concludes the presentation. We will do a Q and A session for those here in the room and also for you on Facebook Live. If you have questions, please feel free to put those into the comment section and we'll do that. And again, the QR code that's on the screen and we did test it, so it does work from the back of the room as well. It will take you to our collegelakedamremoval.org webpage for the project where we have a lot of information, a story map with a lot of the historical information, some of the watershed information. And that's where we'll also have project updates through project newsletters that will come out in the future as we're moving into construction. But with that, we can move into question and answer. Is there anyone in the room that has a question? Yes, sir. We'll have a microphone come over to you shortly.
Yes, upstream where the wooden bridge crosses on a trail. I've noticed, I've been through that area many times and there's tons and tons of trash that have been probably buried for years under the sediment. Is that all going to be dug out and cleaned up through there?
Any of the area that is having that sediment management, any of the trash, the material will be removed from the project site. Yes. Any of the areas that are not being touched with the project, we are not proposing to go into those areas. I will, I'll take that as a, as a moment of opportunity to say, you know, a lot of this litter comes from upstream. Tossing it out of a, of a, of a car or, you know, not hitting the trash can when we, we try to hit the trash can. So whatever we can do to limit the littering that goes on in the community, it will keep it from moving downstream. So excellent question. Thank you. Yes, sir. In the back.
My question is very similar because I live on Blackwater Creek right at the end of where you're not coming. And I've seen a creek completely 100% blocked with trees. And there's a lot of foliage that have fallen in. So is that the, because that, some of that's not on private land, that's just in the abyss of where the creek used to be. Is that going to be managed at all through this process? Because I mean, we've had a full breach dam there, right in front of my property there.
Right. So the area on the upstream side, and let's backtrack for, so that we'll have some, something to reference. Slowly making my way there. Sorry. Here we go. So in this area here, so you're up in this upper reach in this area here. This is former lake area. Yeah, this is former lake area that has filled in with sediment over the years. So, you know, it was built in 1934. As early as the 1940s, we began to see the accumulation and filling in in these upper branches and over the decades, it migrated its way down to what we see today here in the main lake area. Within the project limits, so about here as the laser points moving downstream, we will contend with the instability of the banks. We will make sure that we have stabilization measures put in place to be able to, to support the vegetation within those floodplain areas. These upstream areas here were, are not going to be a part of the project unfortunately. Our hope and goal would have been to, able to do the entire lake area. Funding limitations and costs prohibited us from being able to go the full extent here. So that's why we're having to stop here. However, you know, if at a future date we have, there's additional funding by the university or others to come and do this upper area, we would be able to. So we have designed the project intentionally to be able to, to end the project here, but then to come back and, and do this at a later date if, if, if that opportunity were there for us. So. But in these areas, but that is a, a challenge that we see across the city. As we see our stream banks change and move and erosion rates increase, we are seeing an increase in the trees that are falling in and they can create blockages. So that, that is a very valid point that you make there because we see that throughout our entire, you know, all of our watersheds here in the city. But, you know, we will be addressing it within the project limits here for what we're able to, to do with this construction project. And if there's additional questions or follow-up, I'll be happy to ha- talk with you afterwards. Are there any other questions in the audience? In the ballroom this evening? Yes, ma'am. Don't worry, Facebook audience, we will get to you as well.
Thank you. And I really appreciate this overview of what's, what is to happen. I am just naturally concerned about the erosion that's going to happen to the roads when traffic is going back in for heavy traffic in particular. What's in the plan to make sure that that is also restored back to its original?
The roads within the project area?
Yes, so Lakeside Drive, potentially coming onto campus or even Faculty Drive.
So we do have the road restoration or pavement, I should say, I shouldn't say restoration, but the pavement accounted for within our project. So we, the, the benefit that we have with, in working with English and their approach to the project is that we're really going to try to minimize the amount of traffic that will be here on campus. We have it accounted for repaving if we need to within the project, but if we do not see those damages, we won't need to do that. So it will, it will be our goal not to have to come in and repave this portion here. Damages to Lakeside Drive, they will be repaired as part of the project. Faculty Drive, we have that scheduled with our Public Works Engineering for the, or the Streets Division rather. I have worked with the deputy director there so that we can come in post-construction. Once everything is mobilized off-site, we'll be able to come in and repave Faculty, Faculty Drive post-construction as part of our street paving, annual street paving program that we have. Again, you know, with this revised approach with English, we're hoping we don't see that heavy truck traffic. So we don't, we would not anticipate significant repairs needed to that other than maybe some minor paving. But if we don't have that, we won't need to go in and, and have that extensive repaving. But Faculty Drive is, I think, is already on a schedule to be done. It's just the timing of it will be post, excuse me, post-construction. Any other questions in the room?
Do you know if the trail, Creekside Trail is going to be restored where it crosses the old highway, road, all the way over to Old Horse Road?
That will be at a future date. So the trail itself now, let me orient myself. So the trail itself now comes here, right at about this location, over the, where the existing spillway is. Anything that is done downstream of here will be done at a, at a future date by Parks and Recreation. That's something that will be further in the future. I know at one point they had a vision of doing that. I know right now that pedestrian access is up and through the roundabout going down to the Blackwater Creek natural area. But again, that will have to be a future endeavor. Actually, one thing, that's actually a really great question. One thing I didn't really get to mention during the, the project is that the, the existing Lakeside Bridge, that arch spillway, we have worked with our Public Works Department. They have requested that that be kept essentially. So we are going to stabilize it as part of this project as, because it is part of the dam embankment, there's going to be some work that has to be done to stabilize it. And Public Works will be coming in at a later date to come in and, and restore that and turning it into what we kind of envision as an overlook. So it'll be a great opportunity or a vantage point to come out and, and kind of watch. I keep my fingers crossed that all goes well. Can't anticipate, you know, of course you have to anticipate, things may not, but hopefully if all goes well, it'll be a great vantage point to watch that stream valley come back to life. Do we have any Facebook questions? So the question is, is how will the fish be dealt with? So with the pipe system that's there and So with the pipe system that's there, and I will um stand to be corrected by any of my cohorts in the room, uh, that would, that normally deal with this, or if y'all want to come up and take a stab at an answer? No, they're letting me do that this evening, so. Um, but with the siphon, the, um, the system that we have or the pipe system that, for the de-watering, there will be allow for fish pass, fish passage. So as that water moves through, the fish will be able to move through those pipes and downstream. Um, and we were trying to do it very slowly as well so that we can maintain a dissolved oxygen level, um, a good, healthy dissolved oxygen level um in the water that we do, so that we would not experience a fish kill. Um, in 2018, when the lake was drained, it drained quickly, we didn't anticipate it quite as quickly, eh, it was just a couple of hours that DO bottomed out, and we did see fish unfortunately perish um within that. However, with this um methodology that we have, we anticipate that the fish would be able to migrate downstream if they needed to. Certainly, they'll try to swim their way upstream. Um, and as we saw when the lake was drained before, any of the other um animals that live within there, the geese will move on to other territories. Um, the turtles will certainly find um habitat suitable and as that area changes. Um, and it will be our, our intent to kind of work around them if we need to. Um, we're, we don't want to see any, you know, kind of um significant impact to the, um, to the existing um animals that live there, but we will begin to see um other wildlife move into the area as this turns back into our riverine um ecosystem. Great question. Is there any other? Yes.
Will the old arches of the old bridge be saved and reused?
The, yes, they will. So will the old arches of the old bridge be saved and reused? So they are not coming down. Um, as the, as the contractor put it very eloquently, it is a bathtub. Um, so we have to take out the guts of the bathtub of the bridge, so if you imagine that arched, um, and the middle of it is full of material on the inside, we'll come in, we'll take that material out, stabilize it. So the arch structure and the railing structure, the decorative railing structure, all of that will remain in place, none of that will come down. Uh, we will have to transition the um, the end of it on the dam side of the road, of the bridge. Um, so we'll have to cut a piece of that out to be able to stabilize it, but we, we are saving the structure. Okay, no more questions right now on, on our Facebook audience? Do we have any others in the room? One more check on Facebook? No more new questions? Oh, very good. Well, with that, it is 6:54. We, um, we had the meeting scheduled till 7:00. Um, so if there are no other questions, we will um begin to close um the session here. Um, I'll talk for a minute, just in case anybody comes up with another uh question, and we'll get you before, um, before we adjourn for the evening. But I do want to take this opportunity for everyone, whether you're here in the room this evening or contractors that came in from out of town for this, the second time this week, um, we greatly appreciate their dedication um to this project, and we're looking forward to working with them, um, to getting this project done. Another great big thank you to AECom and the city staff that, um, without this, I could not do without them. So they have been a tremendous support, um, with their technical expertise to, to get this project to where it, where it's headed. So thank you to everybody on the project team. Um, with that, any final questions? Facebook, quiet this evening. Well, again, we have information in the presentation that we shared for contact, so if you do have follow-up questions, please don't hesitate to give us a call. College Lake Dam Removal at LynchburgVA.gov or College Lake Dam Removal um dot org is our webpage, and you can do it through either way. With that, we'll close the meeting, and thank you, everyone, for attending.